I'd like to bring this meeting to order, this May 16th, suburban improvement district meeting. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes. We want to make an amendment to this first item, by the way, and strike the May 2nd minutes. We do not have those prepared yet, so we will only be approving...
Oh, yeah.
...the April 22nd minutes. So I would entertain a motion to approve the April 22nd minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Aye, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Want to sign that, please? While we're doing that, we do have, in the first section of our old business, we will be listening to Mr. Eddie Ishmael present on behalf of wakeboard owners, is my understanding. But I do want to make a comment about the last meeting that we had concerning, I made a comment that Bella Vista, both Bella Vista and Hot Springs Village, both banned wakeboard surfing with wakeboard boats. That is, in fact, not true. I looked it up again, and Hot Springs Village absolutely did ban the ability to fill your ballast even on their biggest lake. And they have a 900-acre lake, is my understanding. But in Bella Vista, they have about the same number of pools as we have here, but they have three that are similar to our size. One's a little bigger. And they do allow the filling of ballast, and they do allow the art of wake surfing, but it's very regulated. If they have a ballast and they're using it, they must only be in the middle of water. They cannot have, they must have 200 feet on either side of them. There's a whole policy that has been written surrounding that, which is pretty interesting to read, and I'm gonna... It looks like you printed it, Joe.
I did.
So I sent it to everybody for you to look at and ponder and that kind of thing. But I wanted to create that, make that update because I was wrong. Mr. Eddie Ishmael, are you in the building, sir?
Yep.
You may begin.
I do have some handouts for you guys. This is a study, I've sent it to you in the past.
That doesn't mean... Doesn't mean I still have it, unfortunately. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then once I get rid of this, I'll...
Oh, okay.
So this study was done in Florida on Lake, I don't know what how, it doesn't say what South Lake was, but they did it with a boat that is, this was done in 2018. So the boat is probably the same boat. Mine is very similar, mine's a 2018 model. But they're basically in there finding, they made a discovery that you really do need about 200 feet from the boat to the shoreline to get the average size weight dissipation as you put off a typical ski boat. Now, what I did attach on the very back sheet of that is the most narrow point of the surf area, which is the point of Coussa over towards North Lake Shore. And that comes out to a little over 800 feet there. So if you're surfing in that, you would have more than 200 feet on either side to do that. Now, as far as the wake surfing activity goes, and I can't speak for every wakeboard owner, but we can only surf in that area. And we only surf 10 times a year. I don't see a lot of people surfing all the time. There's only 10 wakeboats on Thunderbird with the ability to fill ballasts. One point that I remember Mr. Kautzen brought up was about the potential for zebra mussels being brought in. There are not going to be one boat that ever leaves our lake and he doesn't put it on other lakes. He just takes it home and cleans it. He doesn't marry it. But the rest of the boats are either stored at Midlake Marine or on docks on the border. I think my biggest argument right now with the filling of the ballast and things like that is, obviously, it's a sport that I enjoy. But it's hard for me to not make the argument that other boats don't throw wakes that could be damaging. I'm not saying that wakeboats don't throw big wakes because that's what they're designed to do. But there are other boats that throw wakes, and there are other boats that don't follow all the rules. And so at this point, we're wanting to further restrict a certain type of boat when we have other issue points like... I'm willing to answer any question you have. If you guys have any comments or you want me to... I don't care if you exactly how the boats were made and designed and all that.
I'll start, if you, I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
So the first question I have is... So I went out on the dam and I measured myself across. I went out on the dam, walked all the way, and measured all the points across the way, right? That's where your area is currently?
It's from the dam and the park, and most of the way down to North Lake Shore.
Right.
And part of Coussa.
Yeah, I didn't want to walk that far. I had to cross the river, I didn't want to do that, but I could've. But anyway. So I did find, and in many places there was up to 900 feet. But my question is, so, and I was reviewing the rules at Bella Vista, and they said 200 feet from any, not just shorelines, but canoeers, kayakers, other boats. There may be fishing boats, those kind of things. You needed to stay 200 feet away from them. So really, if you're thinking kayakers, canoeers, and maybe fishing boats, I'm going to imagine that fishing boats stay between the shoreline and the buoys.
Typically, yeah.
Typically. So if that's the case, the only way for you to operate the way you're talking about and stay 200 feet is to operate in the dead middle of the water, in that waterway, right? Is that safe to assume?
And that was what I assumed on that map.
Yeah.
Isn't that what you guys originally came up with four years ago, wasn't it? To stay out there in the middle?
That box, which is roughly 50 or 60 acres, and in that box, we're supposed to surf in the middle. Now, we're not surfing, and we don't have our ballast, so it was like any other ski boat. So we could too wakeboard ski throughout the rest of the lake as if we were on top of it or rich.
Right. Well, I remember an issue last year where a wake surfer was right next to the bat, right next to the buoys, and kind of created an issue with the homeowner that was there. How can we, if you're representative of the wakeboard users, how can we enforce the ability, for you to stay in the middle of the water and not let you get over by, not that you even want to be, I mean, you don't even want to be over by the buoys, but how can we enforce that?
I think right now, first things, making sure everybody knows that we're supposed to stay in the middle. Because I, so when that rule was written, since then, that was written, was '18?
Yeah, it actually didn't even say stay in the middle. It just gave you that red buoy area, but it didn't say stay in the middle.
But '18, we've also had turnover of wakeboard owners. I think the main deal is that we can, when they come and get their stickers, we give them something that says, please stay in the middle of that. And two, I don't mind to send all of them a text message and say, hey, we need to stay in the middle when we're doing this activity because they're going to keep the pressure on some of the dog owners. I think that's only way to start it. And then after that, I guess that's where Lake Patrol would have to intervene and whatever you guys have as far as authority and everything. I mean, it would be like any other, someone cutting donuts in one of the ends. Maybe they don't know it, so...
Yeah.
All dogs.
So you would be willing to say, I'm not going to fill my ballast if I'm on any other part of the water? And if I'm just pulling my kids on a tube?
Yeah, and I honestly don't believe anybody's filling their ballast when they're not surfing. It doesn't make sense. The boats don't operate at high speeds very well with the ballast full because it gets heavy, heavy boat, add an extra ballast. Being here, there, I mean, it would be a bit dangerous for our safety. Whenever I'm not surfing, I don't have a ballast full at all.
So would you be willing, as a boat owner, would you be willing to sign a piece of paper saying that I'm not going to fill my ballast if I'm doing, if I'm doing anything other than surfing, and when I do surf, I'm going to be right in the middle?
I think they would be fine with that. We want to be able to surf because we're tomorrow. Because they surfboat in the dams or out there, or I don't know.
Well, here's the thing. This Saturday, I was watching a certain wakeboat down on our end of the lake trying to get somebody up. I mean, they're out there half an hour, 45 minutes. And I'm pretty sure they had their ballast full because those are three-foot weights coming off the back of that.
What color was the boat?
I'm not going to say. I know whose boat it is.
Was it mine?
Huh?
Was it mine?
No. Somebody was trying to wakeboarding.
I was trying to get my kid up.
My thing is, is we've got two terms here. Wake surfing and wakeboarding. To me, if you're going to do any of that, it needs to be out there in the center of the lake. Because a lot of people, when they wakeboard, they fill their ballast up too.
No, not typically. I mean, you might not...
I've seen them, I've seen them.
Well, I haven't seen them, but you would only do that if you had the skill set for that. So I don't have the skill set for it. I'm also a Palm Springs 40, so I'm not going to do it. It's just going to hurt.
It hurts.
That would be someone who was trying to use the lake as a ramp to get air.
Right.
And very rarely, if ever, is that going to happen on Lake Thunderbird. Because nobody on Thunderbird, I know they don't. There's one boat that has a kid that's in college that used to do it, but, I mean, they didn't come out last year. But they're owed, and that one kid, no one else has the skill set for it. Because it doesn't make sense to. You're not making the wake and tour before yourself. It'd be dumb.
I'll admit, this weekend, I was watching a lot of the traffic out there. You know, it wasn't just a wake boat. There were several ski boats out there that were creating some pretty good sized waves too, so... Pontoons.
I mean, the pontoons, though.
As far as, you know, pontoons aside, any boat now is being designed with a V-hole.
Right.
Fishing boats, ski boats, wakeboats. And it's because the V-hole gives you the best source of speed and control. And so those are going to create wakes regardless of what size they are. Pontoons are obviously not doing a V-hole, they've got their tubes.
Let me ask you this question.
Have you read the latest information from Alabama?
Yeah. Well, I've read that they did a restriction. It sounds like something similar to Bella Vista, where it was 200 feet from each side to have that return to the shoreline. I haven't read that prior to long enough.
I have, and I think that that's probably an excellent place to ask for your help to actually police some of the additional wakeboard people. That would really help the entire situation, sir.
Well, and I don't mind to, you know, go back to them and say, hey, if we're a surfer, we're a surfing mill. And I think they would all be fine with that. I don't think there was a problem with that. And again, nobody's filling their ballast to pool tubers, skiers, wakeboarders typically. And we can put in there, if you're going to fill your ballast at all, you have to be in that wake zone area, that surf area. But I just can't imagine someone building a ballast to ski.
So I have a, just a quick question. So if, let's say, and this is just a hypothetical situation, that the center area was marked with, say, fluorescent blue. It says wakeboarding zone or whatever. And it was the very center area of this wakeboarding zone. And then if a specific sticker was made, not that we're going to ask you to paint your boat hot pink, but if there was a sticker that was made that was differentiated from maybe just regular boats that could go on there so that Lake Safety or whatever could say, that's a wakeboard or whatever, then, and if that were to get out of control, would that wakeboarding community be opposed to something like that?
I don't think they would. I wouldn't necessarily want it because I just don't like the clutter in the lake, but, I mean, I get it. It's, I would recommend if we're going to do anything like this, moving forward, let me reach out to them and let's start the conversation with them staying in the middle first before we put any additional buoys or obstacles in the middle of the lake. But, I mean, this is y'all's decision. I'm just a guy.
So you're pretty much in agreement with the other owners that if you're going to fill your ballast, you need to be out there in that restricted area, right? I mean, if you're surfing, boarding, if you're going to fill your ballast, be out there.
And not just restricted, but in the middle of that restricted area? Not on the outsides? I think that's where we've had the issue, where they're riding right next to...
Yeah, and I think there's been some miscommunications between wakeboard owners that are nervous about being caught in traffic if they're towards the middle. But I think a lot of that's been to give us a, hey, stay in the middle. And that's kind of where it's been going. And two, I mean, there's not very many times that we're surfing on a busy day. It just doesn't make sense to do, it's like skiing, and you're not going to ski if there's 10 boats out there just watching you chop in.
Well, in your opinion, can that be a rule? That on holiday weekends, wake surfing's not allowed?
I mean, you've got people coming in from...
I understand that, but I mean... I know you say you don't want to, but would you be willing to agree to those terms?
I don't know if they would be willing to agree. I'm not going to surf anyway.
Right.
For more of that weekend, I'm not surfing. But some of them that are coming in from Memphis or Jonesboro, they might want to.
I got an email from a couple of wakeboard owners recently that said they're not going to do it on the holiday weekends anyway. They don't want to.
I mean, I don't, but...
It's crazy.
Yeah. But I mean, if that's, if we can, because to me, I will say this. It also, picturing you guys running right down the middle of the water is great for everything we've talked about. Works. Now we have to talk about the safety. So if all those pontoons are running around a circle counterclockwise as they're supposed to, and you got wakeboards going right down the middle. So does that work? Certainly not on holiday weekends. I mean, it absolutely would not on holiday weekends.
I can't imagine anybody would be surfing without having to restrict somebody dropping all the way here from Memphis or wherever, not being able to do it on alcohol.
I'd like to hear back from your group.
I mean, I can ask them, but I don't want them to answer. I think staying in the middle, they're going to be fine with it. But it's towards the holiday deal, I don't know.
And Susan?
So anywhere, the rules, the way they're written, you and anybody else in these way, you agree that the rules, the way they're written, if we can enforce those, they'd be fine for this season? Because right now, that number five about operating your boat in an unsafe or annoying manner is part of what we've been talking about with the wakes, when the wakes are outside of that area.
Yeah, I mean, well, we're not, again, if they're operating their ballast outside of that area, then they're not following the rules.
I want, I want for the wakeboarders, anybody that makes the wake, that like we're talking about, to agree to the rules, the way they're written. And if Lake Control, Lake Safety comes up to them and says, you need to leave, that you would leave. And I'm not saying you specifically, but you can talk about the community, that, community. So I, we want, we want the rules, the way they're written, to be enforced. That's what I'm saying. Can you...
I mean, I agree that the rules should be enforced. I think the problem is what's annoying to one person may not need to be other. And so you're talking about the perception of different people and what they think.
Mr. Page?
I mean, they're willing to listen to Lake Safety and talk to them. I mean, I don't think, you know, one strike deal is going to fly. But I mean, if they can say, hey, man, can y'all take a break? You know, do something else, they'd probably be fine with it. I can't imagine like a one-strike and you're outdoors going to fly.
Well, Eddie, we know for a fact they're not going to go to Hot Springs because the wakeboats on Hot Springs with the ballast full would get them kicked off by the Department of Natural Resources or the local police. So this is their only opportunity on Thunderbird because they're not going to fill their ballast and try to ski, if you will, on Omaha. So this is their only option.
I mean, I get what you're saying, that, I mean, we bought into this lake for this reason. I mean, all 11 of us are lakefront owners. We all live here on Thunderbird or Ocean Queen. I'm not the one that lives here full time. The rest of them are, we can just...
Well, I think Ms. Jett made a good point. If we tried our best for this year to really help, and with your help, working with the other wakeboard people and letting us know that you have an issue, we can move forward.
Yeah. I think they're willing to obviously surf in the middle and the holiday deal, I'll have to talk with them because I don't know.
I think the First Amendment is in the middle. That's not specified in the current agreement.
And I think they're fine with that. We don't want to dig right on the edge anyway.
Well, if they would just stick with that, the map that's not attached here, the one in 2018 where y'all all signed it, if you could just stay in that area, that's a place to start.
Well, we want them even, we want them even more in the middle of that.
Right.
We want them, we don't want them to be able to surf on the outside. For ballast filling, you can't be close to the buoys. You have to be more in the middle.
So you mean skiing and everything else as if we weren't on the...
Correct. Now, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Obviously, you guys can ask questions. So would you also sign a piece of paper, hypothetically, saying that I do have a ballast in my boat and that when I'm on the other side of the lake, if I'm, if it looks like my ballast has water in it, then Lake Safety, you're going to have to prove that to Lake Safety? Okay? I mean, we're not going to ask Lake Safety to board your boat. We're not police officers. But we still have to try to enforce the rules that we're trying to create. And I'm asking for your help on how do we, how we enforce that without...
I'll ask them, but I can't...
Creating hardship.
I can't tell you what they're going to say, and I don't know.
And that's what we're looking for, Eddie, is to come to an agreement because you can, you can see the landowners, the property owners, both sides of coin. So we're just asking you to help us enforce what's written with the, with staying in the middle.
I mean, again, I think that 100% we're going to stay in the middle. I just don't know. The other two things I'll have to ask, and I don't know what they'll say. I don't mind sending you guys a follow-up email after I get some type of response. And I can send it to my, to see if they respond.
Anything else?
I'm good.
I'm good.
All good?
I didn't hear a really good, a good significant answer there because you're saying, well, I can't answer for those guys. I don't know what they'll do. They may say, no, go to hell when we tell them that they can't go any, they can't go to the edge or whatever, or them want.
No, I think they're willing to stay in the center. I think it's more of giving authority to the improvement district to get their boat.
To do what?
Because he was asking for the wakeboard owners to affirm that their ballast are empty at any point on the lake, which, I mean, again, they shouldn't be for anyway.
But I mean, if you've got nothing to hide, then you're not hiding anything. Why hide if you've got nothing to hide? I think Dr. Phil said that. I'm not sure.
And I'm going to ask them to send you guys a follow-up email as soon as I get it.
Yeah, if you can ask your group about middle holidays and enforcing it with Lake Safety, can Lake Safety approach your boat and ask you those questions without you being hostile? And maybe ask you to prove it? Because if somebody's riding really low in the water on another part of the lake trying to create a bigger wake for their kids in tubes, that's breaking the rule too.
They're not going to be creating a wake for their own kids on a tube.
Maybe not.
Because their kids are making particular mess of the lake.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll ask them.
Okay.
Just tell them we're trying to reach compromise here.
Yes.
And that includes the pontoons and the tritunes with humongous motors that if you watch them take off, they create quite a, quite a wake.
Well, and that's part of that, any type of boat is going to do that when you take off because they're, they're going from standing still to trying to climb. It's hard to, with any boat.
I had demonstrated to me on a Warrior with a 40 horsepower motor the other day. I was surprised, just showing me what would happen. It was interesting.
I'll talk to them as soon as you guys get them out.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you.
Okay, also...
Cassie, do you want to speak now or at the end?
Me?
Yeah.
I'd love to come down if I can.
She called late in the day about the agenda...
To get on it?
McDaniel also, about the wakeboats.
Sure.
She got an email that I gave y'all at one of the last meetings.
Right. Okay. So you approved her to get on the agenda before she just walked in the door?
Let her talk at the end, wherever we can get her in. I just, I already sent the agenda out.
It's appropriate now.
It's appropriate now.
I'm with you. Does Norman want to talk, or does...
Okay, she wants to talk now. She's got him.
Yes. Try to come with me for a second, I'll give you another name out.
Believe me, I can speak loudly.
Okay.
Good afternoon, evening.
Evening.
My name's Lucinda McDaniel. I am a retired attorney. Our family has had property here in Cherokee Village for over 30 years. When I heard that the wakeboarding issue was still on the agenda, I thought the decision had been made earlier. I contacted Betsy to say, what was the decision? Can you tell me what happened? And she said, actually, they're still talking about it. Can you come up tonight at 6:00 and talk to them about it? From the property owners standpoint, I think, sure. So if you'll let me take just a couple of minutes to talk to you about the property owner's position. And I don't speak for every property owner, but I speak as a property owner. I'm not going to duplicate what's been said, and I'm going to address a couple of things at the disposal.
Are you a lakefront owner, just to be specific? Okay, thank you.
Two lakefront lots, actually five lakefront lots. We have two that our house is on, and three that's at the end of the code that we're using just as a wildlife area, so it stays natural. The other two are lakefront, they have two docks on them, new docks, not old docks, that are getting beaten to death by the waves and the waves. And I understand you all are making a decision regarding surfing on our lakes. And I understand there are two signs to every issue, and that you have to make a decision as to whether it is in the best interest of the property owners here in Cherokee Village to allow surfing on our lakes. To me, it's a very straightforward decision. There are hundreds of property owners who depend on you to protect them against property damage personally through this cause by the waves that are being created by these wakeboats. There are 11 people, as I understood it from the comments earlier, that have wakeboats. They want to use the wakeboats for fun and as said earlier, because they, if they support, they enjoy. There is one resident here with a wakeboat that creates the waves they're going to surf. There are hundreds of property owners along the lake shore and hundreds of property owners that use the lake that are being affected by the huge waves that are being created by these boats that are surfing on our lakes. You've already heard the report from the Lake Committee. They went back, they looked at the size of the wave, how much velocity created, how much damage were created, the one-foot wave, the two-foot wave, the three-foot wave. You have all that factual information. You've also got eyewitness accounts of property damage and personal injury. People who've come and spoken about a grandchild who was knocked down by waves. People who've been knocked down on their docks. As property owners, we're counting on you to protect the hundreds of us that are at risk, even though I accept the 11 people who want to wakeboard because they want to do that as a fun sport for themselves. And I don't object to that. That's fine, I understand wanting to have a fun activity. But there are 11 of them, one resident, and hundreds of us. There is a distinction between a right and a privilege. The protections from property damage and personal injury are rights. Those are legal rights that you hold and you can protect. Driving a boat is a privilege. It's kind of like driving a car. You have a privilege to use the roads in a car as long as you don't damage property, injure someone, or take some of the actions that are against rules and regulations and laws. If you do that, you not only have the privilege to drive on the road. We have the same issue with the wakeboards, the wake boats, the surfing boats, the ones that are making the large enough waves that damage property and potentially injured people. That is a privilege which may be granted to them, but may be denied to them because of the issues of property damage and personal injury. I know that the SIB Commission has taken similar action in the past to ban jet boats because of the risk of personal injury and property damage and also to ban the skis because of the risk of personal injury and property damage. We need to take the same action with respect to the boats that are creating these surfing waves. And I understand completely the suggestion that you stay right in the middle on a line. We all know that's not going to happen. We've seen the boats, we've seen the people violate the rules, we've seen the people violate the regulations. They've been under the code, we live on Bodenoff. They've been up on the other end of the code, the wakeboard, way outside the area that is allowed presently for the new wakeboard. They do not follow the rules, they do not follow the regulations. Perhaps this gentleman can get them to do that. I don't know that he can do that, but I do know that wherever these boats are, they are going to create big enough waves that this commission is at risk for allowing an activity that causes property damage and personal injury. That's a true risk. What we would do, what I would do as a property owner, is specifically ask you to protect our safety and our property and to ban the use of the wake boats for surfing on the lakes. Skiing, as he said, is not a property, not a problem. They're not going to be low enough in the lakes to cause these big waves that can knock people over, that can tear docks loose. Our dock has been tossed from the morning on back because of wakeboard, you did it 30 years. It's not for the hunters, it's not for the fishing boats, it's not for the skis boats. It's from the boats that are creating the weight that's big enough to surf behind. So as a property owner, I would ask you to protect our safety, protect our property, and do not allow wake boats to go surfing on our lakes. How was I answering the questions you may have?
Do you guys have any questions?
As commissioners, we have the right to protect the properties. Now, say we do decide to ban these wake boats, and a lawsuit comes up. Once again, we, the property owners, are going to be responsible for those lawyer fees. So do you think this is a wise decision for us to go ahead and ban them and then end up with maybe $100,000, $200,000 in lawyer fees?
I don't practice law anymore, but let me speak with experience. As I said earlier, driving a boat on a private lake is a privilege. It is not a right. There is no legal right to drive a wake boat on a private lake. There's no cause of action that I'm aware of that can be brought against the property owners or the commissioners for changing rules or amending rules or making any change that will protect the property owners just like we did when the skis were banned and the jet boats were banned. That was taken to protect property owners' personal injury interest and property interest. There is, however, the very real risk that has been put on notice now, especially by the gentleman who spoke at one meeting about his granddaughter being knocked down by a wave, that you, we, as property owners, have even put on notice that there is property damage and there is personal injury occurring because of the waves created by surfers that we can be sued, we all could be sued for personal injury because of property damage caused because the commission allowed boats on the lake that were creating waves too big for this lake. They're one hour, exactly one hour from Henderson. They can fit in there and see on the water with no issues at all. This lake is a small lake. It's developed over the 30 years since we've been here. But over the 30 years that we've been here, we've encountered these same kind of issues. We've had dangers with skis, we've had dangers with jet boats, and the commissioners in those two situations determined that the risk to the people on the lake, property owners, their guests, and to the commissioners themselves, was greater by allowing the jet boats and the jet skis than to ban them. And the decision was made, we're going to take care of our people. We're going to protect their property, we're going to protect their safety, and we're not going to allow those type of water crimes on our lake.
Questions? Thank you. All right, let's talk about money.
About what?
Money. Uh, financial outlook. Do you want to talk about, uh, your, your, where you are financially? Budget-wise, to expense? Am I too loud?
Your feet back.
You turn your volume down on there.
Oh, I want people to hear me. Hello, hello?
Same as each month, I left a copy of the financial package on the back. Um, I made little notes that you'll see on the front cover sheet that says the payment to the fitness club. You'll see the Omaha Rec Center had a negative income for this month. And the reason for that is that each quarter, any money that we've collected is a fitness center membership, which is $100. 50 of those dollars go to the actual fitness club, and $50 stays in our account. So this was our check for our first quarter for, um, 2022. And there was also a small check, and it was only like $187. That was the fourth quarter of 2021. So that's why you're seeing the negative amount. If you go all the way to the far right, you can see that we had budgeted $6,100, and we're actually already exceeded that at almost $7,100. So the fitness center has done well, and we're having lots of people visit there. Um, if you'll notice that the next section is about expenses, and it shows that our general office expense, we exceeded our budget for the month by $18,000. What that was is that the real estate and personal property taxes were over the budget by $16,000. I think in October, when those taxes are normally due, you're going to see that leveled out for a year-to-date number, but that payment came in and we got it out already. So that's why that's $16,000. And then we were over in legal fees this month by $6,500. Now, bottom line, if you go to the, um, last page, you're going to see that our, that we're still under budget in our expenses and we're over budgeted in our income. So our first quarter has gone really well, and I perceive that we'll have the same for our second quarter. I'm trying to remember when we get to that page. All right, so our total expenditures are, or actually, our income less expenses for the month is $346,000 versus $115,000, which was budgeted. So we got a good payment in for the beginning of the year for taxes, and that's kind of put us where we're at. Our variance for the end of April is $231,000. Again, anytime y'all have questions about this, if you need me to go through it, we post these online. If it doesn't make sense, or you want to see how it's all laying out, just call the office. I'll be glad to explain it.
Thank you, Betsy. Uh, in, in looking at, at, at the, the rest of our old business, I'll just go through them one by one. Um, the irrigation loan, I don't think is something we need to approach at this point. I am looking into even the next item, uh, which is, we, we talked a little bit in our working meeting about sustainability, uh, the 10-year outlook, future debt, capital improvements, that sort of thing. And I think it's important to, I'm, I'm researching capital improvements and what they look like and, and, uh, lowering this assessment with a different one. And, and I want to make sure that we're all, we're doing everything right. I know we have some big expenses. The Omaha Pool is the very first one on, on our list. Uh, but I want to make sure we're doing it right and that SID is sustainable over the years. I don't want it to run out. So I'm, I'm still looking into that, and I'll, I'll give you my updates as I get them. The, and I think that goes along with the amenity list of repairs from the gym. You've got a, a budget, well, they're not budgeted, but they're more maintenance items, I'm, I'm imagining, than capital?
Well, I mean, the roofs, I mean, there's, if you look at each one of them, if you go to that back page, it kind of gives you what I think is the priority.
Oh, I thought you were going to, were you going to get the insurance company or adjuster or something to look at?
We are. I'm just waiting on them to get back with us. Uh, I still don't have a dollar amount. I don't know what we're going to do with that, but I do have some bids on some of those locations. And I think, you know, we need to maybe talk more detail about it.
Should, should we wait till we get the adjuster money back before we talk?
Well, I think that, you know, from personal experience, the money from the adjusters are giving us up to two years because of the large number, and they're calling this catastrophic things with the hail damage. I think that if we can find a roof for this building to work with us, that it's regardless, we've got to do it. It's not an option, whether the insurance pays a little bit or not. It's years of deferred maintenance that went in the hailstorm from a few months ago that's put us in this place.
Yeah, no, I totally agree with you. Uh, again, the question is, is it capital or is it, is it, is it just a maintenance item? How many quotes do you have?
It's a maintenance item, it's deferred maintenance. Any capital item would be an improvement.
Yeah, I know, just over the years, it just kind of...
If we went up and did the pitch like we're talking about, I think that is an improvement.
You suggested that as a, as a good idea.
Have y'all paid attention to a cure?
Yeah.
I mean, that's kind of what they've done to get rid of that flat roof. I had guys on the roof today for air conditioning issues at Omaha, and it's standing in water, the drains are clogged. I mean, it's just, the list is this long of how those roofs are failing.
Okay. Uh, you've got, you said you've got quotes?
I do have some quotes.
Okay. Uh, you want to forward them to us?
Yes.
And in our email, and we'll, uh, we'll look through them and...
Yes.
Rock or, I, I agree with you. Questions?
Because one of the roofers is a wake boat owner?
Yes. I saw that.
I don't know which roofier he's talking about.
Well, if you call...
There are two roofers from outside of the area.
If you call Jonesboro Roofing, that's one of the emails we got from the wakeboard guys. Anyway. Um, okay, uh, so campground future plans. I'm guessing you're getting some quotes, and we've, we've got a quote for the, for the electricity?
Uh, the electrician was there, um, actually Monday this week. Um, they will get us a quote. They're recommending that we upgrade all of the electrical sites with a 30 and a 50. Um, they can tell us the ones that already have power to them, pretty much what those are going to cost. It's the ones that don't have power that are going to have to have new wire, new conduit, some additional work to it. Um, so they're going to get that to us, I hope, within the next week. Same electrician that's going to do the breaker box at Thunderbird. So they've been very responsive, shown up. They're also the HVAC company that installed the air conditioner at Omaha in 2006. So that's who came out today and did some service on it.
So we're waiting on bid for, for the campground? Okay.
Yes, I did want to say we're at $1,800 at the end of April. Has our income here to date there. Um, and I also was asked about the following on the trail question. And so I took the original map and kind of did a circle of how we originally talked about it. I think it's a good start point. I don't think, it doesn't give us all the cut-throughs in the middle. But I think David had talked about some things he thought might be good to do in the middle before camping time was going on. So I thought this was something that if y'all wanted to look at, that was my suggestion. That was something that was a follow-up from the previous meeting.
So again, on the, on the trail question, uh, I think, David, weren't you the one that brought it up? If, if we create trails, then we're going to have to maintain them. And then we got, then we have, you know, who, who are we? Do we have to manage it to make sure that none?
Well, I, I think from what we originally looked at and talked about was just a natural trail, you know? And, and if we go kind of how we, we originally talked about, kind of going between the maintenance shed and the bathrooms and go down and cross it over, and then if we kind of cut back to the right, which you'll see on there, and follow the water line around, I feel like that it's not going to create that big, huge field in the middle that's going to have to be bush hogged every 10 days and maintained. I think it gives us the option of going around some of that and then coming back down the river run, the old wash dish, and come back out that same location. I don't know what the mile is to do that, what the distance would be, but I think that that would be a trail that we can easily maintain as a natural trail with just very little...
Just people using it?
Yeah.
Kind of maintain it?
Go up here and look at that?
Yeah.
I just did the highlight, kind of what we originally talked about.
You know, there's a number, there's numbers of people that I'm familiar with that raise their hand and said, yes, I do walk-in trails or riding trails. And we talk about a community of boaters. Well, there's a community of walkers and riders who, if they get out as part of their daily thing, when they're riding, it might be to take a slow trip around or trim. They, we call them face slappers. If you're on a bike, you're getting smacked by a branch or something. And we just go by trimming those as a, as maybe a work day or something. It's not a usual thing to do. I don't have a community group up here, but there's numbers of around, like, uh, basically, they're from Park and Salt Trail Ranch or something like that. There's just active, like, at this kind of central, or animal park. Little, there's one that's active in Jonesboro. And it's just, I'm, I'm a member of their Facebook groups, and they're having regular rides, they're having regular trail walking days, and they have a Facebook group. We don't have, I don't have a group of people yet because we don't really have, I haven't really pushed them. I don't see a place for me to ride locally that's, that's a big trail. There may be some that I'm not aware of because I've only been in a community a few years, 10 years, but I have not explored ridable areas. I'm trying to buy a bike on a dachshund.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand, and I, I know what you're all about, and I, I respect it, and, and I'm adding people to the agenda that I'm not supposed to, so...
Okay, well, I was, anyway, I'm saying it's a group effort. It's a community effort. It doesn't need necessarily be an effort that individual, you have to send out and hire somebody to do it. That's what the group of trail people...
Yeah, that, I, I, I understand, and I, but again, I thought it was you that made this mention. If we're going to do it, let's do it right.
Right.
And make sure it's done correctly, make sure somebody's walking it monthly to make sure there are no fallen trees, uh, make sure there's not, you know, a dead deer laying in the middle of the woods. I, I don't know, there's, could be all sorts of stuff happening. But, uh, but I'd have to walk it. Have you walked it?
No, I haven't walked it yet.
One of you guys did, didn't one of you guys walk around out there?
Yeah, David and I did.
Yeah. Okay, so that's kind of around the...
Yeah, and I, I, I don't know if this is the place. This is my second meeting. But I, I think that we ought to let, let, start someplace with a walking trail. I mean, we're not talking about paving anything.
Right.
We're talking about a lot more with maybe, with these people taking care of it themselves. The face slappers and the dead animals, they can call one of us. Then call me, I'll come and get the dead animal. I mean, we need to start someplace. I'm just kidding, we'll have a barbecue. Start, you know, start, start someplace, and start small and start and see if the idea is embraced and she thinks it's going to...
Yeah, as long as it's on our property, it sounds like it is.
It is. It is. And I have this would be on our property, not going behind the gate.
No.
And they would have access where they would park now. I mean, it's a start. I think it can be built from this, but it would be a start.
Okay, so what do we need to do?
Tell them, she told them. Vote.
I mean, what do we need to, do you need to do anything to make it walkable now?
You've already brush hogged it, haven't you?
Well, we bush hogged the big center field and I think now maybe what we do is take a walk with some clippers and maybe we tie some things and say, you know, this is where we...
I got, I need some...
There you go.
Rock and roll.
Lop some off, yeah. I think it would just be an afternoon of spinning some cotton out there.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think we need to vote on that, I think that's just perfect.
So just go ahead and do it, start, start the way it's written.
Rock and roll. Okay. Commissioner employee user fees, we talked, we chatted a little bit about that last time and I think we need to just vote on it and be done and take that off of our list. Does anybody have any, any other comments about how they should be for employees and or commissioners? Should they be the same, should they be different?
Are we not gonna vote on the trail?
Oh, I didn't think we needed to, it's just nothing, we're not spending any money or anything.
You've already brush hogged it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I move that we...
We're just basically talking...
We don't need to?
No, I think we're just, you're talking about somebody just making a, going for a walk.
It's official permission then to go out there and create this trail that's...
It's inside the campground property. It's not outside the campground property and all you're doing is gonna walk through the woods.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the trail for the campground.
I'll second that motion.
Excellent, all in favor?
Aye.
Made it official then. All good.
Official!
So comments or questions or anything about commissioner and employee fees concerning, obviously this does not talk, we're not talking about SID fees, we're talking about user fees. So we're talking about commissioner, do commis, in the past, commissioners have received stickers for their boats and they get to golf for free. And I think that's it.
Swim.
Swim, yeah, all that kind of stuff. Oh, and they got a free membership? They got a free membership to the Omaha Fitness Center that would, no $100 charge?
They got, yeah, I think $50 is all they were supposed to pay.
And what was, the employees got the same thing?
Yeah, the same thing for the fitness center.
So employees were on the same, the same thing and... Questions, concerns, directions? I know you've had some time to think about it now.
I would just move that we...
I think the commissioners should be able to pay their own way.
Yeah, me too. This year, I mean, we've all paid our fees this year, except for people who all pay them. But it, may, maybe, yes, but for the, okay, never mind. I was gonna make a move.
You were going somewhere with the employees.
I was gonna make a move that we accept them the way they're written, but, you know...
The way they're written, they're free, so we can't do that.
Yes, well...
Well, what about employees?
Same thing. The employees work for minimum wage and they put up a lot of stuff and, and I have flip-flopped from giving them anything to let them play golf if they want to. Maybe they should walk and not, if they want a card, pay for it, but let them, let them have, how many times a year are they gonna golf?
Okay, so your suggestion is to let employees continue on the way they are with free golf, free boat stickers, all that kind of stuff? But commissioners pay for all of that?
Well, the thing with the employees is they need to be property owners to get a boat sticker or something like that. That's my only stipulation.
Do we have any employees that don't live in Cherokee Village?
It's a great question.
I'm sure we do. I'm sure we have employees that don't live in Cherokee Village.
Do they, do they bring their boats?
They may not have boats.
I can tell you off the top of my head, an employee that has a boat that doesn't already live on the lake, I think that mostly when those are, I think like safety's getting the free boat stickers, but the majority of those guys live on the lake.
Right.
I wouldn't, I think that probably golf is used by 25% of our employees, but there are some employees, especially the seasonal workers at the golf courses who work seasonally so they can play golf for free. They're retired, they're living on a, you know, limited income and so that's one of their reasons that they want to work seasonally.
I thought in that policy manual, when I, I thought in that policy manual you said how many hours, you know?
What it says is that the seasonal employees would only have that benefit of using those amenities during the time that they were employing. And the full-time employees, of course, would have the use of those amenities year-round because they're full-time. That was really the only difference in the user fees. It also just kind of mentions in there that you have to have approval by your supervisor. So, you know, I think some golf restrictions, especially with the new cards, if you're an employee and you get free play, that maybe if you want a card and they're available, you pay for the card, you know?
Joe?
I think there's some things.
I agree with that. I mean, anything that would be in addition to the actual activity that they're going to do, yes, you'd have to probably pay for that. But now that falls back, they're like, boats, well, that's an activity and then you're making them buy a boat sticker. So I don't know what's appropriate and what isn't. Probably not gonna break us financially if we allow a few of those employees to have something, but then again, they're also being compensated for their time.
Yes.
But they've agreed to work for the wages they're making, right?
Okay, Dave?
Like I said, I think us commissioners should pay our fees and let the employees go.
Okay, Mr. Page?
I'm gonna agree with Mr. Nevel.
Yeah, I think we stay out of the weeds with the, you know, whether you live, well, I, I take that back. If they do not live here, I think that may be an issue because they don't pay SID fees. So if they don't live here...
That's why I said they need to be property owners.
I don't live in Cherokee Village, but I pay SID fees because I own a lot of...
You own here, yeah, you own property here. So I would say that if you're an employee that does not own property here, then no. But any, any employee that owns property here would be able to do that. And I'm in agreement with the commissioners.
So would that be no amenity used or just the boat sticker you're specific to?
For commissioners or employees?
For employees. So we have an employee in our office who has, does not live or pay SID fees.
Yeah, so an employee that, that works for us, that is not a, a property owner, does not get their stuff for free. I would, that's, that would be my take, I believe.
That's, that one's fun.
I, I think we're entering a sticky place of discriminating to offer one thing to some employees and not offer it to all employees. I mean, if it's not part of your job to have to live or own property, I think we might open a can of worms with that.
Yeah.
This is not a private business and you shouldn't be spending funds, you can't give money away, you can't give the service away, you can't give the sticker away, at least the municipality can. And if you guys are running under the same rules as a municipality, you cannot give away service area. And I can bring you in the book and show you the...
All right, well, this, this, this improvement district's been doing it for 50 years, so...
It doesn't matter what they've done.
Okay, well, then you can get in line to sue us.
If you are running after the same rules and regulations as the municipality...
Just, you talk at the end, Peter, I'm with you, I understand. My suggestion would be...
Let's take a look for now and let's take another look at it and map out who we have so that we know all the employees and what the actual issues are. And it may be a moot issue.
Maybe.
I know it's not a moot issue, because we have someone in our office that would not fall into that category. And there are others, we have other employees who would fall into that category.
So what we would be selling them is, or what we'd be telling them is that they'd have to pay to play golf?
Right, so they would not have, be offered the same benefit package as someone who was a property owner.
Yeah.
I don't believe that would be legal. I think we should check into that further.
Yes, I agree.
And I think that there's previous written policy as to what this benefit was. I've read that somewhere and it's in written policy back from the 70s.
Well, again...
What's, what's between now and...
We're changing policy right now, so I mean, that's just how it works. But I, I'm with you, I...
Let's do more research.
Okay? We'll move on. I have not fully read through the employee HR policy vacation, sick time thing that you've done. I wanted to redline a few items and I've not fully done that. Has anyone else?
No.
Okay. Let's make sure we probably do that pretty quickly so we can vote on that and get that in policy.
So we're gonna get back and...
Actually, actually, part of that, what we just talked about is gonna be in this procedure manual.
Yeah.
So we'll get back on the HR policy with vacation and sick time concerning employees to add employee user fees. But can we agree that commissioner fees?
Should be...
I would, I would entertain a motion to change the current policy for commissioners that they do pay all of their fees as required by every other property owner.
I make a motion we adopt that policy for commissioners.
Okay?
For this year. For this year. We'll look at it again next year.
What?
You can always bring it up next year, yeah, if you like.
We've already, I mean, all the fees have already been paid for this year.
That's what he's saying, he wants to look at it again next year, maybe.
Oh, oh.
So we have a, a motion on the table to, for commissioners to pay their fees this year, all fees that they wish to, that are required of them.
I want to make mine.
Well, I'm gonna need a second.
Need your second.
Oh, okay, I apologize. So to vote, Mr. Page, you vote?
I vote we should.
Yes?
Yes.
Mr. Nevel?
Yes.
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 Good deal, motion carries. So we'll work on the employees with the employee package. The future of the Omaha Fitness Center, there was a suggestion last time to put that off for a little while and I think we should just take it off the table for now. If we will just strike it?
Thank you.
Omaha pool update, I think we're waiting on quotes still?
I just had someone from the community send me some contacts from a Missouri company. I have sent over to them some of the information from the previous bids, the American League stuff and waiting on them to call back and give us a date while they'll physically come out and look at the pool. I had another guy by the name of Kyle Cooper who came out and was basically a concrete contractor who does a lot of pools and he came out and has somebody that he wants to bring back and look at it, but he's not called back. I've told both companies I don't feel that this is something to be able to do this summer and that I would hope we could start the project this year and finish it in our budget for next year. And that's kind of the mindset we're moving forward with.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's part of my capital improvement plan and I'm gonna bring something to the board to show you, give you some options on, on capitalizing some things versus using just our cash. And I'm working through that.
Okay.
Public amenities, which ones? We, we talked, we just kind of glanced over this. Does anybody have any thoughts currently? You can't swim unless you're a property owner, you can't use a boat on our lakes unless you're a property owner or a guest of a property owner. But we are not, in my understanding, we're not enforcing those rules on either golf course. Is that correct?
Correct.
That is correct for the South in particular, and a lot of times they'll buy a chance to play at the North and I've seen them out there as well.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, again, they, they, the extra golfers create a lot of revenue out there and we don't get the play that we, if we take them out and we say that you can't, we, we lose the revenue in those, in those areas. So, Mr. Page, comments on, on continuing that, the way it works currently?
Continue exactly doing that for the short term and address it in the January timeframe of next year.
Keep it the way it is.
Okay, so lakes, pools, all the other amenities are, are still kept under the property owner? Mr. Kaiser?
I guess I don't understand enough on the golf thing. I, I would think that, I understand what you're saying, you're bringing in a lot of the public and they're paying green fees, which, are their fees substantially higher than property owners?
Yes.
So it weighs itself out, correct?
What would you consider substantially higher?
Well, more than property owner.
$10?
Let's say if it costs you as a property owner $35 to play around golf, a non-property owner should have to pay $55 or $60.
Yeah, we just did $10.
Yes, $10 more.
$25 for a property owner, $35 for a guest, nine holes.
Okay. Is that standard wrong? I mean, is that...
Didn't you say those were the, you raised the prices to get into line with...
The, yeah, with the other courses in the area.
What about Turkey Mountain, Cooper?
All in, all in.
We're in line with those guys.
And the only question I have is what's gonna keep, what's gonna keep the golfers from taking that same mentality to the swimming pools and the boat docks?
Your owner's card.
They have to show their owner's card at those other two facilities.
But right now at the golf course, you don't have to.
You have to show your owner's card.
Yes, you do, you gotta show your, you have to show it to determine the price that you're gonna pay.
So if you have it under cards, you get the property under rate, and if you're a guest, you pay the higher rate.
Okay.
Where at the swimming pool, you have to have a guest card or a property owner card to get through the turnstile.
Okay.
Any other opinion, Mr. Kaiser?
That's it.
Jeff?
The public amenities, just, just, just the golf courses, North and South golf courses be open to the public?
At the higher rate.
At, well, the way, the way you've already agreed to, a couple, you know, the, the meeting, I sat here and listened to y'all, you, you had raised the rates to surrounding areas. I'm good with that. If, and we can, if something comes up and we get ready for the December, for January, we can talk about it again, but I'm good, I just don't want it to spill over into the lakes and the swimming pools and the tennis courts and the pickleballs and the...
No. Yeah, I think the biggest thing for me was the legal aspect of it. And, and we consulted with the, with our attorney and asked if, if we...
He said okay.
And he said, well, nobody says okay when it comes to a suburban improvement district. They just say, you can, you can absolutely do that and I don't see any precedent that you have to keep it private. So...
Another one comes to mind, campground.
And the walking trails. And if we take guests at the campground too that do not have guest cards, they just pay a higher fee.
They just pay a higher fee than, than if you've got a property owner?
Correct.
So a property owner can go out to the campground with a guest and say, here's my guest and get the discount?
Yes, the property owner comes in and rests the space and then has their guests stay there. They get a little thing they put in their window with their information and that's how we know who they are.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would, I would entertain a motion to, to keep things the way they are currently and to, and to review them.
Dave, can I say so?
Can you wait until the end? You gotta wait until the end, man. Not necessarily. Not necessarily. Yeah, but things can change, so... We're using the, the, we're using the, our attorney to guide us and, and so...
I get that, but have you asked him if a suit can be brought against Sid for damages against property because it's no longer, what is it?
A suit can be brought against Sid for anything.
I understand that, but there, there's legs under that suit.
I understand. And again, it can be brought against us for anything. And we don't know whether we'll win or not. We're kind of operating in the dark here. We're kind of operating in the dark here. SIDS are, are a different animal. And so, we, we obviously, they didn't know in 2018 what they were going up against either. So, we just have to do the best we can. Right now, the golf courses don't get play. We're not gonna interfere with any property owner playing golf, zero. All we're doing is adding up our user fees and helping us maintain that course, and enabling us to lower the SID fee for our property owners. Because the more use we get at those golf courses, the more we can lower our SID fees. Now, that becomes an issue where property owners can't get out and play because we have so many people coming from miles around to play our golf courses. That becomes a different issue, I believe. But in my, I would entertain a motion to keep it the way it is for now until we find out otherwise.
I'll make a motion to keep the property owners' fees where they are for the North and the South golf courses, and that those are the only two amenities that are public.
And the campground.
And the campground.
And the campground is, well, I thought we had to have a guest pass if we had a...
And again, in both places, if they had a guest that had a property owner card, they would get a discount.
But if they just came in as a guest, they'd pay a higher rate, they don't have a card. That's how it's offered.
So, the motion is to keep the rules as exactly the same as they are today. Is there, do I hear a second?
I second.
You second it?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded, Ms. Jet? Do you vote yea or nay?
Yea.
Yes, Mr. Kaiser?
Yea.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Motion carries. We'll keep it the way it is and we'll revisit it if the time requires us. Associate memberships. I'm looking into associate memberships and the Los Indios topic currently, because it's a legal issue. It's not a, it's not a, it's not something that I want to tackle as just a off-the-wall subject. Los Indios is, so, Los Indios and the, Los Indios and the associate memberships kind of go hand-in-hand, in my opinion. Los Indios is not located on, in SID property, therefore, we cannot assess them. But they are on the water, and their guests use our facilities. And how we work around that is something that an attorney's gonna have to guide us on. So, we will continue to get guidance from our attorney before we make any rules there. I think associate memberships fall in that same category. We do have, we have some printed, updated, some doc policies, construction easements, that kind of thing. We've been pulling them from other facilities, and we're working on those as we speak to try to get a policy in order, or in line, that is, that makes sense for today. Because the pontoon boats are bigger, they require a little bit bigger slip than what we currently have in policy, so we have to, we have to work on that. Assessment of zero land value buildings, if you remember, through the new, through the settlement, through the new assessment, the zero land value buildings, there were churches, item, there were areas that did not have any land value. So, they obviously did not get included in our assessment. We do not charge anybody anymore that didn't have land value because they don't pay taxes. And I can tell you that through my spreadsheet, it equaled about thirty thousand dollars a year. So, if we wanted to go back and assess those churches or entities like Waterworks and Entergy, we would have to have a professional appraiser appraise their land value and go through a process, through an attorney's direction as well. But it would gain us about, in my estimation, about thirty thousand dollars per year. Is there, do you guys have questions about that, or is it something you want to move forward with?
Is that really a big issue? I mean, we got churches closing left and right, Cherokee, there's a bunch of empty ones right now. Who's going to buy them?
No, I mean, it's a, it's a, I can, we can strike this off the list and not worry about it. I brought it up for your benefit because I was involved in the initial reassessment, and this was highlighted big time by my spreadsheet. It showed me, my gosh, I could get another thirty million.
The church that's for sale at Cherokee Road in, not May and Dan, but the one that goes at Red Door, Church with the Red Door right now. It's not a church, it's been empty for years. Are you saying reassess that so that somebody could buy that and put a house on it?
No, no.
Okay, so what are you saying?
So, churches and utility companies don't pay taxes currently. So, they don't have land values on their, on ARDATA.com. So, when we did the reassessment, it's by land value. We can only assess people if they have a value of their land. And those currently do not have a value of their land on ARDATA.com because they're, they don't pay taxes. They don't pay property taxes. Churches just don't. Now, for some reason, fifty years ago, when the SID was started, they were able to do the assessment on their own through whatever powers they thought they had, and they assessed all those buildings and collected money from them. All the churches, all the, anyone that was in SIDS territory, they slapped an assessment on there. But the lawsuit, when it happened, one of the biggest things that came out of that was you commissioners can't just figure out what people's land is worth or what your assessment is. You have to go through the proper channels and have a county assessor, and that's why we went with land value, because a county assessor is sworn to uphold the law, and they're trained to assess value, land value. So, if we wanted to fight this battle and go attack churches, not attack, but go assess churches, we can absolutely do that. We would have to, there's a route to get there. If we don't want to worry about it at this point, then I would absolutely entertain a motion to forget about that. Don't worry about this thirty thousand dollars a year that we could possibly gain and move on.
What, what would an appraiser cost us then?
I don't know.
I mean, is it worth it to have an appraiser come out and go through this?
I mean, if you, if you, if you think about what an assessment is for SID, an assessment, like, it's an assessment of benefits, right? So, if you think about what, how that sounds, what benefit does the churches, what benefit do the churches get from paying this assessment? The benefit you get for paying your assessment is, as a property owner, you get guest fees, all that kind of stuff. The benefit of a church, what is that? Do they get to give guest passes to every one of their congregation? I don't think so. So, they don't really receive the same type of benefit. So, I will tell you that I, businesses as well, businesses do pay SID fees, but they have land value that we can assess by. So, those are different, but you're right. The thought of businesses, what benefit are they getting from being assessed, but... Yeah, no, I get that. There's a, there's a side piece to that that I understand. But again, I'm not trying to lure you in any direction. I personally don't believe it's worth it to move after churches and Entergy and Waterworks. I'd rather, if it was gonna give us a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars a year, I think that makes sense. But for thirty thousand dollars and churches closing all over the place, as you suggest, my suggestion is to move on and, and not concern, not concern ourselves with... I only put it on here so that you're aware. It doesn't come up later on. Can we, can we just hold, please, I gotta get through all this. I know we're gonna be here forever. Just wait till the very end. I need, Mr. Joe?
I'd just say we move, leave it like it is. Let's leave them at zero land value buildings and not assess them taxes.
Okay.
I second.
You second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Let's move forward with that and we'll strike it and take it off the list. Getchugumi Beach, I'm gathering, you've got some quotes maybe?
Getchugumi Beach, we went over and the roof is Dr. Gumpie Thomas completely redone. The raptors, the decking, the gutters are falling off the side of the building. For some reason, they didn't take him over to that building. There's three buildings that are employed and take the roofing guy to from the municipality. So, I've got those back in order for him to come back. I just don't have a date. We've got two beaches to get opened up at the beach. I mean, at this point, I reached out to J&amp;J Roofing today to see if they would come in quickly. It's a twenty-four by thirty-two building. Probably for very little money, we could just do it and be done. I don't think in that condition that the insurance company is gonna say, oh, this happened from nail damage.
Yeah.
This happened for years. Inside, it needs a window unit and not an old chiller, one of those old cooling units that had water going to it. We could eliminate that, put a window unit in there. It's got hot water, it's got an operating bathroom, it can be cleaned up pretty easily, but the roof has got to be done there.
So, most of the stuff will be under, will be within your budget, within your spendability?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, I don't know that, I mean, that's already a policy to, for her, that she can spend whatever it is. I say we remove it and let you rock and roll with it.
What about the parking lot?
I actually got Atlas Asphalt. I spent with them today about the cold patch for the, for the golf course car paths, and they said they would come out and give us an updated quote to see if they could patch that bottom part and then seal both together instead of trying to redo the whole parking lot. It's just a lower section, it's about easy.
Okay.
While we're talking about beaches, I was approached by some people when I was out at the Omaha Lake, and they had an opportunity to reopen the beach shop.
We're trying to, yes.
If we could do that for no fee to get it going for this year, I would recommend that if that's reasonable.
Are you talking about Getchugumi?
No, no, no.
Omaha. Yeah, we've got something to talk about there concerning employees and that kind of thing. We'll talk about that in our executive session, if you don't mind. So, we've got property sales after the ALC.
So, are you gonna let Betsy do, oh, get it ready for Memorial Day?
Yes, you're gonna get quotes on the asphalt, yeah.
And just get it done for them?
Yeah, rock and roll. That's within your policy, or within your... Property sales after ALC ends in June, we have, we have been working on that specifically, trying to figure out how we're gonna do it. The initial thought was that we were going to take somebody and put them in the office, right? And have them sell our property. So, I've gone to many brokers and attorneys trying to figure out what's legal and what's not. Well, we can absolutely put somebody in our office. The problem is, is that number one, that can't be their only job. If it's their only job is to negotiate contracts with potential property owners, that's a no-go. They can be mixed in with everybody else and have other job responsibilities, but that doesn't make sense to me either. We can absolutely sell our own property. The unfortunate part is, we can't hire somebody to sit there and sell our own property. So, one of us commissioners would have to sit there in that chair up front and sell our own property. We would just rotate, so...
Without being a broker?
Yes, we can sell our own property. We can all sign and negotiate because we, as commissioners, represent SID and represent the land. So, we can do that, but we can't hire somebody to do that, to sit up front. So, so then it became, we wanted to go to some real estate brokers and find out kind of what their take is and, and some research, but we found that, that the city of Little Rock, which is similar to us, this municipality, had about fifty-eight properties a couple of years ago they were trying to sell. And what they did, and they didn't want to just use one person, they went through and did an open listing agreement with whoever wanted to share in that with them. Either you want to call it an open listing agreement or a non-exclusive contract that we would use, that we would... So, what we'd do is, we'd approach all the brokers in the area and say, would you want to sign this agreement? We, as the selling agent, or the selling property owners, and they would have to decide whether they want to opt in to this program, allowing them. Now, the two brokers that I've already talked to were very interested in being able to sell our property. They're not so crazy about the terms because we have specific terms on how much they can be paid according to the policy, or according to the settlement for the next few years. They can only receive twenty percent of whatever they sell. Twenty percent goes to them, twenty percent goes, and it's a cumulative thing at the end of the year. So, my suggestion is, and I'm still working through it, but my suggestion is, the direction that it's going is that we use that non-exclusive agreement and really open up our, our land sales to whoever wants to sell it, whoever wants to represent it. As you all know, we can't market our own property either, and that's an issue that we would have if we sold it on our own. We couldn't market it. We couldn't put an ad in the paper in Illinois suggesting people come down here because it costs money, and that money that you pay in assessments is not supposed to be for that. So, having a non-exclusive agreement or an open listing agreement with a bunch of brokers, they would certainly be trying to sell the land, and they would take pictures and get out there and hustle, we think. So, that's the direction it's going. If anybody has anything to add to that, I'll continue on that path and see where we go, and maybe get an opportunity to have several brokers in here to talk through that with us about what that looks like.
Do you have any idea of their fees?
Well, again, if you sell a thousand dollar piece of property, see, that's been the issue in the past. Brokers don't want to sell our land because, let's say they sell a piece of land for five hundred dollars. Well, if they get a normal broker fee, the agent gets six percent, and three of it goes to the broker, they're making ten bucks. So, a real estate agent doesn't have any, you know, they really want to work for that. They want to go sell houses. So, that's our issue.
Give them free golf.
Right. So, again, but maybe they can, maybe they'll consider volume.
Right.
And maybe they'll consider just wanting it on their, on their property, I don't know. You know, the two that I spoke to were very interested in continuing conversations.
Continuing conversation, we had to go and sign some papers that apparently happens every, I don't know, every three months or something. We sign deeds over and...
Contracts.
Contracts.
And my concern, and maybe it's unfounded, is that July first, we are going to be responsible for the tax bill that's due?
No. No, we don't pay taxes on anything that we don't own.
But aren't we gonna own it July first?
It will revert back to SID.
If we own the property and it's not owned by anybody else, we do not pay taxes or SID fees.
We don't pay SID fees, so we just pay taxes.
We pay taxes on the property that we own. We pay taxes on the property that we own that we don't sell. Like our golf courses or our buildings, things like that.
That map that the American League Company's got with all the red and the white and the blue squares on it? Help me, Ron, you were sitting there learning.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Tell us what you were talking, tell us what you learned.
Well, Mr. Rhodes talked about the opportunity to continue with the ALC activities, or if it reverted back to SID, we could have a tax bill of close to two million dollars on the properties that were on this map that were red. And there were over eight thousand pieces of property on the south side that we looked at. I lost count at seven thousand nine hundred, so might be a few more. But that's where we were concerned, and that's where, Tim, you and I haven't had a chance to really discuss that because that is different than what we talked about two months ago after I got elected.
So, who owns those properties now?
Right now, they're SID, but they're really provided to ALC so that ALC can then market those as the broker. And therefore, there's still no, no taxes and no fees paid because they're considered pieces of property for sale. And that was the concern that we had, the four of us that have talked to ALC.
But that's why there's no property taxes being collected because they're not sold to anybody. We own them as SID. If somebody bought them, whether it be ALC or a regular landowner, they would be responsible for property taxes.
That is the understanding that I have after talking with a broker and talking to Mr. Rhodes.
So, where does this two million dollars come from?
The total numbers of properties that will revert from what ALC currently is marketing right back to SID as the owners of the property, and that tax would go to Fulton or Shaw County.
So, what you're saying is, they told you?
No, no, that that's exactly right, yes.
Yeah, so what you're telling me is, they told you that the SID property that SID currently owns, that they're marketing, that they currently do not pay taxes on, that if, once their contract ends, we still own it, then we'd be responsible for property taxes?
That's the indication that he came up with, and again, I have not been able to verify that because you and I needed to make sure.
That's back taxes because those properties are not just gonna evolve in a fog. Something has to happen to the taxes, and we are gonna be responsible for that unless he can sell nine thousand lots between now and July first.
And that's, and that's what we understood sitting there.
So, SIDS would be redeeming them from Tommy Land certified after the two years if the taxes weren't paid. That's part of that foreclosure and redemption process.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the way I understand it.
But it's still, if the state comes looking for it, we're gonna, we're gonna be responsible. But apparently, it's been one of those, it just kind of floats out there, has for years and years. And it's part of the reason that, for the fee structure with American Lane Company. Cause they, uh, the way I understand it is, if, if I buy a lot, they, they market me a lot and I say, okay, I'll take that lot for ten thousand dollars. They pay all the back, they pay all the back fees, they pay all the back fees, they pay taxes. They take a little bit of their marketing money and then, and then when all those deeds clear the state, then I become the owner of that land. It's, it's got a lot of money attached to it. A lot of different things are attached to each one of those unsold lots that belongs to Sid.
And I believe, and I would have to go back and research that, but it has been laid out within that settlement agreement. That legal, that lawsuit, it's somewhere in there that talks about this. If I'm not mistaken, there's a percentage of these sales that go to lawyers that actually won that case.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, no doubt, there's no question about that. There's a, well, I just talked about that, twenty percent of that money at the end, that we collect at the end of the year goes to, uh, the attorney. I get it, I understand that. The, the, the thing that, that you're talking about, the thing you're trying to tell me is that if, when the contract ends with ALC, ALC is telling you that we're gonna owe back property taxes on all of our property that we own. And I don't buy that. Currently, we own them. ALC doesn't own anything. We own those properties, he deeds them back to us so that he doesn't have to pay property taxes when he sells them. So I don't, I don't buy that, we'll have to like, look into that. I, I don't buy that. There, I, I understand it, I'm not a broker and I'm not an agent, so I don't know the actual process and, and, uh, I don't believe he's gonna share it with us, but, uh, but I can't imagine.
I just got, I was given the impression that we were gonna owe a just chunk of change to somebody in March of last year.
Yeah, I know, I, I can't even imagine.
Until, until I had an opportunity to really drive that home because that didn't sound reasonable to me. But I didn't say anything to Mr. Rhodes. He was saying there's a fact and in reality, we need to verify.
Okay. Okay. Okay, um, we'll, we'll check that out. It's very confusing. Okay, uh, Thunderbird next steps, I imagine we're still kind of working on where we are at Thunderbird. Omaha is, is a priority at this point?
Thunderbird's really close. Uh, we were not able to do our inspection this week because of the rusted diving board. Uh, we took that over to Sid's to do some welding. It was less than three hundred dollars. We pick it up tomorrow and we'll get the diving board reinstalled. Um, and we're set on a schedule for early next week for our health department inspection, so we should be ready to go. Um, there's one concern that's come up with Thunderbird. You'll see in your folder that I have put in there a contract for Pruitt's Pools. Ray Sparkman goes tomorrow to speak to the, uh, doctor about his upcoming surgery on his knee, which is a workman's comp injury from December. And he will be out. He is our pool person, one with experience. I don't wanna wait until he's gone. Uh, I reached out to Pruitt's because they come to Cherokee every Thursday and do the townhouse pools. So they've given us a pretty reasonable, um, offer to do the maintenance for us. We already purchased our chemicals from them, uh, so I've included that in the package for y'all.
Yeah, I saw that, you wanna use them going, moving forward?
Yeah, I mean, we're through with Ray. Then with Ray's out, let's hire somebody to do that and we can keep rolling with the other two guys and kind of offset the cost.
Okay, uh...
I don't wanna get caught with Thunderbird pool not open and, or not maintained through the summer. I wanna make sure that we keep that up and rolling.
Okay, uh, can we talk through those numbers in a, I, I think we need to take some of those numbers from, from with contracts and vendors and stuff into an executive session so we, uh, are not making those things public, but yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh, updated Sid map, we brought that up before. I, I suggest that we kind of put that off until we get some, some other things taken care of first. The Escalante Park as well. You wanna tell us about your ABC license?
The ABC license is, um, really difficult being in Fulton County because Fulton County is a dry county. Um, it is very personal. I would personally have to be responsible as the manager of that ABC license. And when I went through the class and listened to what all the rules were, the South Golf Course would, would make us, would make me liable. I'm not interested in doing that. I think that we can open the restaurant without serving alcohol and still provide a benefit to our golfers. If, if the liquor license was here in Sharp County where it's wet, it would have a whole different rules to it. But the cousins in Fulton and the way that it was set up originally, I don't think is a way we can continue it with a nonprofit. And I personally am not interested in putting my name out there.
Didn't I see something where it's already in, uh, previous commissioners' names?
Well, y'all, y'all's names were listed on there as principals and directors of a nonprofit group that we've never heard of before.
Yeah, so David must have done that.
It, it was done back in two thousand and four. So I think it was done...
My name was on there, how can it be two?
Well, that was, that's been changed. But initially, the nonprofit group was set up as the Fairway Gold and Athletic Club. That was set up in two thousand and four. The municipality can't get an ABC license. So they set up a nonprofit, I guess Greg and eventually David were the permittees. They were the people responsible for the ABC liquor license. And then it changed to where it had you, Jim and Joe as the directors and the principals, which would have made you responsible if there would have been violations or somebody would have gotten hurt or over served. I, I'm just, in a dry county, it's too much liability. I'm, I'm just personally not willing to do it. If somebody else thinks that's a good idea, I would say, let's look at it here. This would make more sense.
Yeah, yeah.
But then we'd have to apply in Sharp County for a liquor license.
Oh, oh, for sure, and new permits, everything would be finished at the South Golf Course. And because of COVID, they, they had taken it out of commission, I guess, when the bistro left. And then after it's out of commission for a certain amount of time, it should have been terminated. But because of COVID, they've added time and added time. So we've been paying for a permit that's been inactive for three years.
Right.
And if we don't make it active by August, then we lose it anyway. I'd say we just let it roll, let's knock into it. And if we decide this is something we want to do, then we do it here and we reapply and we do it right. That's my opinion.
Okay, and it would be a private club over there? I mean, that's the difference, right?
It's still a private club, but it's...
But not here, it'll be, here it'll be open.
Well, here it would still be considered through your permit as a, as a private club, as the golf course. But what we would encompass would be the entire perimeter of the golf course. So you could sell beer out of a building and they could take it onto the golf course as long as they stayed in that premises. And the south course, it is that one little roof, twelve foot square.
Yeah, they can't take the beer out of there, even if it was actually...
And they even said that if I did this and the inspector came that was just sitting in the parking lot and saw a golfer come up and dunk beer cans into a open trash can, that we could be a violation because it's a dry county and that would be public intoxication. So just too, too many possibilities.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
That's something that could come back and bite us. But I think if we opened the restaurant, we manned it with some employees, we do breakfast and lunch, just offer something for our golfers, we could do that very affordable and just not offer it out.
Okay. All right, uh, let's move on to new business.
Can I say one more thing about the Escalante Park donation?
Absolutely, yeah.
The other thing that they're asking for was, is would Sid be willing to turn the power and the water back onto that building? They wanna put a play, Miss, Miss Becky wants to put a playground out front. She's willing to cut out of her pocket the twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars for a playground that's equivalent to what Toha is fixing to do. But what she'd like to do is use that empty building for something, tutoring, something for the kids, giving out backpacks for the school. So in return for her donation, she would like for us to turn the power back on.
So it would be our building, responsible?
It is our building, it's been our building, but just sitting empty with no electricity, no water for over twenty years. It could be a service, we could use that building.
Is it even?
That's our, our, our most needed community is the Santa Fe addition. You know, there's kids over there that, you know, we could maybe run a, a hot meal program out of there through a grant in the afternoons during school. There's, there's things we can do there that we can give back to our community and just not leave that building sitting empty.
That only sounds...
Yeah, has anybody over there looked at the building?
Huh?
Has anybody that over there looked at the building?
I, I've been over there, there's no mold, um, there, there's, you know, the roof is in good shape. It got no roof leaks, the water's not on. There's a small galley kitchen, it's got appliances, it's got a refrigerator. They just didn't use it, nobody's used it. They stopped paying the utility bill on it and it's been locked up ever since. I think it'd be worth at least getting the energy over there to see, can we turn the power on? Let's get the water turned on and see if there's a problem. But it's a use, it's something that our community could benefit from and especially some of our families and our kids.
Well, I, I can see the benefits for it, but who's gonna be responsible, you know, for, you know, locking it and unlocking it and all that stuff?
Well, I, I think the programs would be set up very similar to like we have the dancers at Thunderbird or we've got, you know, different groups that have meetings in our buildings. Whether we open it up on Monday, Wednesday and Friday and close it up at three or, you know, if we had a person that volunteered to do those programs, we may could do something that way. I mean, she's a retired teacher, so she's just wanting to, she even talked about bringing some kids from the high school that wanted to be teachers to maybe tutor kids from the elementary school. She has a lot of really good ideas. And just turn it off. There you go. She has some really good ideas and the only thing she's asking from us is, will we turn the utilities on and have water?
No, can, can she come and talk about what she wants to do with it?
Um, she may, yeah.
Is that possible?
I hated not to give her name because she did come in and say, I want to present this.
She wanted to be anonymous?
Privately and just said, I want, I have a foundation, but I wanna give back.
Could I make a, can we make a motion or no on something like this?
For sure.
Just for discussion?
Absolutely, you can make...
I'd like to make a motion that we let Betsy investigate the, what in the world it would cost to get the power and the water on. Make sure not all the water lines are burst in the house.
Right.
Let's see how feasible that is. And we know that would be a pretty low utility bill because it wouldn't be running twenty-four seven all the time. Make sure the air unit or if it has a window unit or a heater or wall heater, make sure that all of that's in a working condition. So I'd like to make a motion that we let Betsy investigate the stability of that building and the working capacity of the appliances there and then come back and present that to us. I see, I see the playground as a mute issue that's, I don't see why you wouldn't do that.
Right, right.
That's my motion. I second.
Move the second in, all in favor? There you go.
Thank you.
And see if you can make it happen this summer. I mean, I, the people are screaming, I mean, they just gotta have something.
Yeah, yeah, I'll bet that, I think that's an awesome opportunity.
Okay, uh, settlement technology correction, uh, or settlement terminology question. Technology's getting late. So really all that is, is a, is a, you know, I saw it. I reviewed it again today, I looked up the, the settlement paperwork and I reviewed, you know, I looked on ardata.com and it's just, you know, it says appraisal in one section and assessment on the other. And it's really just terminology. Is Tim gonna fix that or help us fix that with, uh, our attorney or, doesn't it even need to be fixed?
Uh, it does need to be fixed. I've got three property owners who are waiting for this amendment to the settlement. Uh, I have two issues is that I've never received a signed settlement by the judge. So I requested that multiple times from our attorney and I, I've not gotten anything. Um, I did finally speak to him verbally about this and we pulled it up and read it together and he agreed. Then one paragraph that says one thing and the next paragraph that contradicts that. And he's the one that said this would need to be amended.
But it even, I mean, we all know, cause there's an example, it shows an example of what, of how that calculation and it's obviously the appraisal, the land value appraisal part. And it makes sense if you just read it, but I get where you're saying that some people might take.
Well, when they get their tax bill, they get Cess on there, what your assessed value is and what your appraised value is. And so that gives two totally different numbers.
It does, but the settlement is very clear about the example that it sho- that it shows. And caps that were out there.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is, I just read it. I just read it today, it's very clear. It says, example, if your value is thirty thousand dollars, do the math and here's your cap. If you're on the water and here's your cap if you're on the golf course.
Why are you gonna show me where in that agreement the word appraisal even exists?
It exists three times below where it says assessment. I just read it today.
Please show me.
I will, I promise you I will.
The one you have online and it's not there.
I'll show it to you. My wife and I were just looking at it today.
The significant difference in the amount you're asking people to pay if you move from assessed to appraised.
Again...
Basically, it's five times as much in like...
I understand that. And if we went by that assessed value, which is what you're being taxed on, it's actually twenty percent of your land appraisal. That's for property, okay. Well, if you use that number, then SID would be broke tomorrow.
Yes.
So it obviously makes no sense to use that. And the example that's in the settlement shows that very clearly. And so, I'll show you that when we...
What last thing on this? The lawsuit to some extent was based on poor communications from the former general manager and the former...
Yeah, I kinda wanna debate that, but the lawsuit.
What, what this is, is a movement that very much resembles some of the things the old commission used to do. Just say, well, no, it, you, you think it's a horse, but it's really a draw.
No, it's, it's, it was, it was very... It was in there, I'll show it to you.
Website and it does not say...
Yeah, I'll, I'll show you to you, I think, you know, I was just looking at it.
Can we hold the comments? Can we hold the comments?
I think we're done, you're gonna move through, uh, to try and get that, it's a small correction that needs to be made.
Needs to be made, yes, yes. I've given this to Grant Cox, our new attorney. He said he would go to Tim Hutchins and figure out what needs to be done since Matt Bishop all replied.
Yeah, I, I, what's up with that?
We are still moving forward to fix that.
Is he still alive?
What?
Is, is Matt still alive, I mean?
He replied to, uh, Grant, we saw the email.
Good gracious. Okay, if anybody doesn't have anything else, we are at property owner comments. Who's got comments? Three minutes, please.
Come on, Mr. Cal.
I forgot. I'm not actually a property owner. My name's Cal, the inside of the fire chief here in Cherokee.
And here, back here, you say?
Is it on, Cal?
Is that better?
No, it's not.
That one's better.
Yeah, it's great light.
Not great light. My name's Cal, the inside of the fire chief here in Cherokee. I was to be put on the agenda, but we had an issue with that, so Betsy asked me to come and speak here at the beginning of the comments. Prior to our great brainstorm that we had here in Cherokee, I actually was evaluating all our buildings, which are SID property. And our roofs were much in the same shape that some of the also are now that you're going through, same exact situation.
Would you speak more into the microphone?
Sorry.
How's that?
Fine.
Oh, thank you.
So, uh, we filed insurance claim, they're gonna pay us. But while we're having that work done to get the roofs replaced, which we all have an issue with anyone whatsoever, I would like to make some improvements above the beyond. I lost the mic. This thing here is hot, one may have that.
I would turn yours off too, just to make sure.
Let's try this.
So, um, I had actually got a quote just replacing the roof as it was prior to the damage. I also wrote, which was a chandelier, I assume, just what most of this ID had been looking for. But, um, my question was, if SID would consider paying for an upgrade of the, like, metal roof or pay a damage in the future, would it be kind of thing? I got a quote both ways. Also at the place park fire station, I had, um, we have a severe water issue at the front door, mostly because of the design of the roof and that goes back to that thing in the hole. I'd like to extend that roof out an additional ten or twelve feet to get the water from our sidewalk in front of our area. That's what I would come here and propose to y'all. Uh, these are improvements to the buildings that y'all own. I know we have an agreement as far as just maintaining the buildings. But this I felt was a little above the beyond. but this I felt was a little above the beyond just maintenance and I did know it might be something to consider. I do have, uh, some numbers. The addition on the front of the roof to cover the sidewalk area, uh, of course, prices aren't going to go back yet, but this was, as you're quoting that, um, extended the front could be about $35,000. And the difference between our architectural changes and about 26 years ago was $68,000. So approximately 10, I mean, it's less than that, but approximately $10,300 there. You're looking at to improve the buildings above the beyond what they are now.
Okay.
Okay, Cal.
That's all, Cal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Page, um, this was.
Yeah.
I was recently in hearing a part about, um, the zero land value buildings. They're land, um, I don't know if people that own the reserved properties that have nothing on them that they pay a tax for that or not.
No.
So it seems to me like that I'll be pursuing for, to get their assessment.
SID owns those properties.
Oh, SID, that's okay, I thought they were owned by an outside person. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Hi, my name's Deanne Draper. Uh, about the, um, properties that are gonna come back to us from, um, American land, uh, we're not allowed to spend money on advertising, so we can't list our properties. But we do have a website that we're already paying for and we could list the properties on there at no additional cost, just an idea.
Thank you.
Peter Martin. I, I would greatly appreciate if the SID commissioners would decide what rules they're gonna run by. It's kind of annoying when you say, "Well, it's in the old paperwork," but when I look at the Arkansas State and what rules they're running by, they're running by every day. So if you created bylaws and created reasonable things, how you're gonna conduct business and what you're gonna do, revamp what the whole stuff is and bring it out and post it so everybody can understand what the rules of the game are. That would be one great thing. The other thing with the land, give it away. You don't have to sign it, as long as you're paying taxes, I got it, give it away. And there's a lot of places in the United States that do give away land. We'll give this to you a whole bunch of websites that you can find free land in a whole bunch of places. There's a contract you have to sign, you know, but give it away.
Thank you, Peter.
Scott Leonardson, resident. I just had two follow-up questions to some legal things that we brought up previously. One was, uh, attorney update on the, uh, with the docks that were in violation under the law. I'm just curious about that, I don't know if you can respond or my comments. The other one was, uh, I expected that there's the fire hydrant, uh, issue with the water department and so forth and I think we'd kinda like to know what update, if there is one, I don't know if you're having information from the attorneys, thank you.
Do you have updates, Ms. Betsy?
Uh, since our last meeting, there's not been any change with, uh, waterworks. You know, we responded to the, um, what do they call, derogatories, am I saying that right? And then we had to do the findings, we had to send over some information for that. I haven't heard any reply back since we've, um, done that, still waiting to hear.
And we're moving forward, we've asked our attorney to move forward with Mr. Parker and his dock situation and Mr. Southard.
Yeah, I just recently sent a update email this week asking for an update by today's meeting and he said he didn't have anything further to update on the docks.
So it is, I, I heard that you, that, I read somewhere in, in a, in an email that there was a settlement proposal, is that true?
I, I received that comment from Mr. Conley who said that you had mentioned to him that they were wanting to settle, so.
That's because that's what I heard.
Well, I generated the email and it included all of y'all on the email and asked Grant, "Was there a settlement talk that I wasn't aware of?"
Yeah.
And he said, "No," so.
Okay, good.
At this point, the only thing we had offered was that they removed the 16-foot gateway that they added after it was inspected and that's the last that I've heard.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Denny.
Penny, Charlie, I've been waiting now, are you going to open up the Omaha Hall Center or Center back up for the people that use it after 5:00, the people that work, the people? We paid for, I mean, I paid for a membership fee that was open from 8 to 7 in the evening and now it closes at 5:00 and we had played pickleball on Thursday for over a year and now we are losing the people to play because they work or they drive and we may get one, maybe two games in depending on how many people are here because they close at 5:00. But yet my fees haven't changed, so then I'm still paying for something like this.
I understand that, I, I will say this and I think Betsy's probably all in the same wavelength. I will tell you that in the, in the winter especially, can everyone hear me? Cause the, I didn't want to sit, in the winter, I played pickleball in the evenings as well. I played on Thursday nights, Tuesday nights, Wednesday nights and many, 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 many nights I was the only one there with the other three people I was playing pickleball with. So I understood when Betsy wanted to kinda back up a little bit, especially in the winter when it got dark so early. Uh, I think that Betsy had suggested we revisit it when we, the hours changed or when the, uh, time change happened. And we really haven't talked about it since then, but I was just up there again the other day, uh, at 5:00 and there were just the four people playing pickleball and.
What day was that? Our, our notice came in earlier. And we don't get off work until 3:30 or 4:00, 3:30 to 4:00.
Right.
We have one arrives from Agnes and one arrives from Riverwood or, or she met him. By the time we get done playing, just like Thursday, we got a game and a half in and some got one game now.
Right.
Because then we've always, for the last year, we have played until 6:00.
Right.
Um, some didn't come and go, other people were coming because they got a 4-4.
Yeah.
But they wouldn't get there till 4:30, they don't come now or if I have kids that are in school, I can't get there at that time. So we have lost some of our pickleball players and we've lost their time. And yes, we were given the option to change to a different night to do this, that doesn't work. We all have different schedules.
Is it a consideration of yours, uh, I mean, we can absolutely talk about it as a board, but are you, what's your thought?
So the hours that we have now have been 8 to 5, Monday, Thursday, Friday, Tuesday nights and Wednesday nights, we're there from 8 to 7:00 PM and on Sundays from 8 to 1:00. Um, we did recently before the, um, meeting that y'all had on Tuesday, we went to the person that's our attendant in there and asked if there would be another day of the week that would work best for her. My problem is, is that we're accommodating not just yourself, but some of the other people that we're trying to accommodate are not property owners. So I collect $3 and I pay someone 11. It doesn't really make sense to try to keep the Omaha Hall Center up later for people who are not property owners to come in and play. What I did offer and what has happened is that, I'm an early bird, so our, our maintenance department that opens at 7, so we said, "Let's open an hour early." You know, the people that come in for the fitness center are consecutive every day of the week and they've been coming in at 7:30, so we said, "We can open at 7:00." Um, we offered, uh, during some times when there were some people wanting to play cornhole and we had said we could do a Saturday a month and keep it open three or four hours longer. Well, now the weather's nice, so cornhole can really be played outside, it doesn't have to be played inside anymore. But that may still be an option to add a few hours on Saturday when she's already there. Um, again, there's nights at 5:00, I wanna say one night a week at 5:00, maybe y'all are in there playing and the rest of the time at 5:00, nobody's there.
Yeah, I think, I personally, I'll, I'll give the board the, the time to speak as well. I, I personally think it's kind of a chicken or the egg thing. I think if you open it and then you let people know it's open, they might come and visit it and, and work out if they work out after work, um, it's like this meeting thing, right? We put it at 6:00 to see if family people would come and, and maybe so, we'll see how that works, but, uh, the, the, you know, we can absolutely vote, uh, or set some changes out on hours, but I can tell you from my experience, there hasn't been, you know, there hasn't been the involvement in the evening hours, at least in the winter there wasn't. I've seen a ridiculous pickup in the last three or four, five months in pickleball play, so I hear where you're coming from and, and I think it's a, I would be all for absolutely trying it. Uh, it would mean that Betsy would have to staff it, uh, come up with some more staffing people, which would cost money. Uh, but would that off, would that be offset by people that would now show up after 5:00? Don't know the answer to that question. Any comments?
I think it makes it, whether you're playing pickleball or trying to work in, the working people in Cherokee Village don't have much. Because if you don't get, if you don't get off work until 4:00, you don't have time to get.
But Penny, they had an option six months ago and they didn't use it and that's what I'm, that's all I'm saying.
Penny, are there specific days of the week, Tuesday and Thursday, that that might be extended? If Betsy could work that out or we could work it out with Betsy?
Our pickleball group, the Thursday night, has played for over a year, has played a year that night and that was, that was one night that got cut, but Wednesday stayed open. So we, we got cut, yes, but that's the night and we've played for a year. And we were up to, we have anywhere from 4, depending on what's going on, from 4 to we have 15 people.
And that's what people have come to me when I was sitting out there, saying, "Please open it up till 7:00, at least on Thursday." So that may be the only day that we have extended pickleball play for just a short time to see how well it goes.
It's already open on, on Wednesday and Thursday, so.
Right now it's open on Tuesday and Wednesday.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tuesday and Wednesday.
What we tried to do was do Tuesday for our beginner and intermediates and then have Wednesday for our advanced people. What honestly I see when I come in on Wednesday morning is that the advanced people have taken both Tuesday and Wednesday night. So, you know, it's definitely.
The Tuesday night there, we're there until say 6:30.
Yeah.
We both been, the beginner and the advanced, the beginner and intermediate is the group that's there on Thursday too. And yes, we have enough room that the advanced comes in at 5:00-ish, which gives us our time to play and then we share it for us, that's not a problem. But just come on Thursday, when it, it did give us the option of opening Tuesday and Wednesday and they told us to switch to Wednesday, that didn't work for any of our people.
So if we switch our hours from Wednesday or from Tuesday and.
Wednesday.
Wednesday to Wednesday and Thursday, it would work for you and your group?
On Thursday, yes, because that's.
I'm talking about if we switched it from Wednesday to Thursday, because I don't think it matters to the other groups.
They, they still come on Thursday too.
Well, it's not open on Thursday.
I know, but they're still, they're still coming and playing, they're getting one or two games then to play. Because they play faster than what we do.
Right.
Because they still, they were there Thursday.
I can tell you play a lot of this building.
We get in on Saturday as much as we can.
Yeah.
But Thursday is the one that we got shut off and we'd just like you to look at it again because.
Yeah, I, I think we definitely should think about our hours, especially in the summer when it's light until 9:00. Uh, we would have to pay to man it though and that's a, and again, it's a chicken or the egg thing. If you're not open, they won't come, but if you are, they might.
Build it, they will come.
Hi, John Mitch, uh, kind of go along that same line, uh, the swim club is kind of an arm of re, re, for right now because they, I think they swam on Monday mornings in their pool, we didn't probably though.
Oh, my goodness, nobody's got booed in.
I've, I've already, I've already addressed this.
You got that?
Yes.
Is it gonna be fixed?
Yes, it's gonna work on it.
Let, let me explain what the conversation was, so let's be completely honest. The swim club was to swim Monday through Friday, they used to come in and swim from 8 to 10 and our, and our pool opened at 12, I'm sorry, they just swam from 10 to 12 and our pool opened at 12. But because the Omaha Hall Center was closed last year and we have employees who have told us that we get our maximum capacity at the Thunderbird, which is 50 people, then we decided to give two more hours a day. Instead of opening at 12 till 7, we'll be open from 10 to 7, hoping that will fan that time window open so where we never have to turn a property owner away from the swimming pool and then maybe that extra two hours. Well, what comes with the swimming pool? It has to be cleaned every morning, the chemicals have to be checked. So today, when I went down on a Monday morning to see, no attention over the weekend, it took me about three hours to vacuum just the adult pool. So he comes to work at 7:00 and he starts vacuuming, then by 11:00, he will be finished. How can I have swimmers in the pool at 10:00 if he's trying to vacuum? So I made a call today to the lady who has asked us about it and said, "Hey, heads up, we may have an issue, we have to clean our pool at least twice a week." And we're thinking Monday after the weekend and on Thursday before the weekend and, and we're hoping that a company may come in and help us on Thursdays when the raid is out. So until I know what time they can come, when they could work us in the schedule, I don't know what's gonna happen on Thursdays. But I'm concerned about Monday mornings of us trying to have 40 people swimming in the pool and to have our employees trying to clean the pool at the same time, the two don't go together. So nobody got booed in, but I gave a heads up, I have a concern because that pool has to be cleaned for everyone to swim in, not just the swim club.
Okay, but there are many people that do come.
There, there are property owners, some are property owners, some are not. But they're not included in our 50 because they come before the pool opens, so they won't hurt our capacity. We just have to have the opportunity to keep the pool clean.
Right, and I understand it.
That's it, that's the whole conversation, nobody got booed in, John.
It's like, Gloria, she, she does swimming, okay, and then she does, uh, dancing and she does pickleball and they're all on a given time. So if she gets taken out of her Monday to Thursday swimming, there's no other time that she can really fit in there because this is how it's been set up for years, I guess, at, at that time. And so if their pickleball is on such and such a days and their dancing is on such and such, such a days, so if they wanna attend all of these places and have a nice summer, uh, you know.
I, I just have a whole community of people that I'm, I'm trying to accommodate, that, that's all I'm trying to do. If we don't have the Omaha pools, I'm trying to make it better at the Thunderbird pools and if we don't clean and maintain the pools, then we're not gonna have either. So I'm just trying to foresee what, what may happen, which is what generated the call. I did not want to all of a sudden say, "We got a problem" and her not have an opportunity to know ahead of time. I was just communicating, that's all it was, communication.
I was, I was just asking to bring this up.
Thank you, John.
But that's why, that's why I was right on that, thank you.
I appreciate it, any other comments? Oh, you got beat. You're slow, Tom.
Deanne, sorry about that.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Um, automatic pool cleaner, have you seen us? Put it on the back of the nose, do it overnight. And if it.
Still has to be watched, you know, it can just be left. We, we looked into it, I'll, 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 I will see more about that.
Hello, Bernie, um, on your taxes here with selling lots, we recently purchased a lot of sites and negotiations went back and forth quite a few times with ACL because of back taxes, you know, to the price of the issue several times, trying to get the back taxes paid off and everything. So there are back taxes on the road we saw.
Yeah, I think the question is if we redeem them. Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that question, I think it's if we redeem them and I don't think we get, we, we can elect not to redeem them. I mean, there are, there are tons of properties at the, uh, at the, uh, land commissioner for sale today. There's 2,800 properties sitting on their website, uh, that we have not redeemed. So we'll have to investigate that further and kinda figure out what, what happens there, but anyway, any more comments? All right, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session. We need to talk about some employee directives and initiatives and it's late, so we'll go quickly.
Will I make a motion, we adjourn to executive session?
Adjourn, second, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.